Good evening. My name is Derek Day and I reside in District One. I'm the Chair of Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters, such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. All right, and with that, we will continue our introductions here in the boardroom. Commissioner Casino.
I am Eric Casino. I serve at large and I live in the Lacey UGA.
I'm Sandy Kaiser. I represent and live in District Three.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
I've got Nelson, District Four.
Kevin Pestinger, District Five.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
Tom Bertlett, District Three, but I live at Tumwater, District Five.
All right, with that, we can move on to approval of the agenda.
Daniel Bomberger, District One.
And Daniel, thank you. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we move Item Six to Item Three Point Five, just because I do believe that Item Six will be a short one, and if we could get that taken care of right away and moved out, it might make some other people happy. We have a motion to the agenda. We need a second for that.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that as well.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes. We're approving two two sets of meeting minutes here for August seventh and October sixteenth. Let's do that.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for the minutes of August seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second? Any discussion on those minutes? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our August seventh meeting minutes are approved. We're on to October sixteenth.
Chair, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for the minutes of October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Commissioner Halverson, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the October sixteenth minutes? All right. All in favor of approving the October sixteenth minutes and accepting the audio as the official meeting record?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. The October sixteenth meeting minutes are approved. Now, we will move on to public communications, and we've got a handful of people signed up. We'll go ahead and start here in the boardroom, but I'll go over really quickly our guidelines. So our general speaking guidelines are please introduce yourself, including the address you reside in the county. Please address the Planning Commission, not the audience or staff. The Planning Commission does not, or may not, respond to public comments, and speakers are limited to a total of three minutes. The timer will show on one of the video screens to help you keep track of time. Meeting attendees cannot donate their time, or speaking time, to another person. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature, please, and no comments that are commercial in nature. All materials provided in the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Act, and remarks on projects that have already had a public hearing may not be considered by the Planning Commission. Thank you for your cooperation, and we will go ahead and start here in the boardroom. We've got a couple people signed up, and we will start with Rob Rice. Yes, please.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Rob Rice. I reside at four two one six eighty ninth Avenue Southeast. I live there off Rich Road by East Olympia Elementary School. I want to speak on two issues, one on the swap policies, which are coming before you, and the other is specifically on the barholding project. I am one of the principals in the barholding project, and I know that that's on the topic you're going to discuss later here, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the UGA and swaps. I came to Thurston County and, well, I did my first development in Thurston County in nineteen eighty-nine, right before the growth management went into effect. So I've been here the whole run for the Growth Management Act, and it's hard to imagine if planners like you were sitting down right now and trying to craft the UGA boundaries and what you'd come up with with everything that's happened over the last thirty-plus years. I've seen numerous changes to the critical areas ordinance. We've got pocket gophers, spotted frogs, butterflies, sparrows, on and on, that weren't on the table when the UGA boundaries were drafted back in nineteen ninety. And what the swap policies can do is give planners the ability to modify those boundaries, not make the boundaries larger. I know that that's not going to happen as much as I've lobbied for that in the past. We know that the boundaries aren't going to get larger, but to trade areas out where there is potential for development and trading out areas that maybe don't have potential for development. And when those boundaries were drafted thirty-plus years ago, I think it was all done with good intent. It all made sense. But a lot of the, like I said, a lot of the critical areas, the issues that we're dealing with now, didn't exist then. And there's huge tracts of land that just aren't developable, and we don't, and in my opinion, we don't have the supply of developable land that was intended back when the UGA boundaries were drafted back in nineteen ninety. Recently, the legislature has adopted policies or procedures for UGA swaps. There's, two years ago, they adopted a policy that these could be updated as part of the ten-year plan, and recently they've adopted policies where they can be updated annually, and there's different criteria for each one of those. But having the ability for planners and cities and counties to be able to move the boundaries to accommodate growth is, I think, a great tool in your toolbox, and I look forward to seeing what policies and procedures you come up with, because I think it's going to be a real benefit for all communities. Specific to the bar proposal, like I said, myself and my partner, Mike Brewer, are proposing the bar proposal out off of Old Ninety-Nine and Ninety-Third. It's in a part of Tumwater that, in my opinion, has been underserved. It's been served very well for residential housing. There is a ton of residential housing that has happened in that area. I'm part of that. We're currently building projects there right now. But there's no services. My dad lives in one of the neighbors we developed. He's handicapped, and it's difficult for him to get in his car and to go into town, and to have something that he could drive right around the corner and go to would be a huge benefit. We're proposing a YMCA there, Canadian Land for YMCA. Is that my buzzer?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'll pass at this point, but I look forward, or thank you for the opportunity to come here, and I look forward to coming back again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next up on our list, we have Diane King, and then next up will be Rhonda Larson, followed by Mike Brewer.
Okay, I'm Diane King, and I live at forty-three twenty-five Sinclair Loop in Lacey, and thank you for letting me speak on this topic of bar holdings. Their proposal, I think, could worsen the housing crisis, and I think that their development is unachievable because it'll get tied up in costly court battles. It simply does not qualify for a UGA swap as a matter of law. The county is nevertheless throwing money at it with staff time and resources that could better be spent helping other housing projects get built. The precious tax dollars and staff time this project is sucking up, is slowing down the housing pipeline. Bar Holdings developers have claimed repeatedly that the UGA swap is needed because of the housing crisis. This claim is based on a false premise. The urban growth area concept does not aim to halt all development. Rather, it seeks to ensure the progress occurs in harmony with farmlands and our natural environment. Best practices do exist for developers to minimize the harm to watersheds and agricultural lands while pursuing growth and new housing. Keeping growth inside existing urban growth area boundaries encourages sustainable approaches, which can lead to more resilient and livable communities. Focusing our county resources on proposals that don't violate the law from the get-go will help address this housing crisis. As I stated previously, Bar Holdings developers argue this UGA swap is needed to address the housing crisis. However, this perspective fails to acknowledge that the current UGA boundary contains sufficient land capacity for housing development. The low price of four hundred thousand dollars that developers paid for the parcel in twenty eighteen was low precisely because it was outside the UGA and not able to be developed. Developers have no entitlement to a UGA swap that would allow them to profit significantly at the detriment of the Deschutes River and long-tum resiliency and livability of our communities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Larson Kramer, and I live at eighteen fourteen East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. I wanted to talk a bit about why an environmental impact statement is required by law for an UGA swap. This is really talking about county-wide planning policies that are currently in the works. I realize the Planning Commission does not create these policies, but I felt that it was important enough of an issue that you needed to hear about it so that you're in the loop. But I want to mention first why it's a good policy idea to have this requirement, to have an EIS or any UGA swap. Unchecked development in counties like King and Snohomish has historically led to significant harm, forcing residents to bear the costs of cleanups. Enacting a policy that requires an EIS before any UGA swap can occur in Thurston County creates additional layers of protection, enabling citizens to see the full impacts of a developer's proposal so that citizens can act as stewards of their environment. So that's the policy reason. The legal reason that an EIS is required is due to a recent decision by the State Supreme Court. This was a case brought by Futurewise against King County. In this case, the Washington Supreme Court upheld a decision by the Growth Management Terminus Board concluding that the State Environmental Policy Act requires King County to do an EIS on a non-project land use decision. The court held that a "no significant impact" decision by the county was unacceptable if it is reasonable to assume that there would be an impact from the proposed land use change. The court stated, "The county must meaningfully engage in the CEPA process when making a threshold determination and must complete a full environmental review where significant environmental impacts are likely to occur." An EIS requirement empowers communities to take legal action against bad development proposals, ensuring citizens have the data to protect their watersheds and natural resources when otherwise there would be a lack of transparency. An EIS requirement serves as a proactive tool for environmental management. Instead of waiting for the harmful effects to occur and the irreversible environmental damage, citizens can use the information from the EIS to address potential harms before they become irreversible, preventing costly cleanups. An EIS requirement targets serious environmental harm. Stopping a UGA swap would be necessary only when there is clear evidence that development would result in environmental harm. This is crucial for preventing the unchecked development that has contributed to environmental crises in other counties. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next up is going to be Mike Brewer, and for those of you online who'd like to comment, go ahead and raise your hand. I see one so far, but if there are others, go ahead and raise your hand. We'll get to you in a minute. And Mr. Brewer, the floor is yours.
Hi there. Thank you for being here this evening. I want to thank you again for your service on the Planning Commission. It is a highly valuable resource for our community, and it makes our Thurston County area a much better place to live because of the timeless investment of your knowledge and experience to analyze opportunities and risks for the county policy. So thank you again. As you start to become more and more familiar with the Planning Committee's future role in policies related to urban growth swaps, they are new statewide, and so your body is like many other groups around other counties that are reviewing and coming up with policies and making recommendations. I would ask that you are open-minded and you consider UGA swaps an opportunity to right past imperfections. So when urban growth areas were drafted over three decades ago, they were mapped in many ways that were highly convenient, whether it followed a road or a quarter section, but it didn't necessarily look at the environmental risks of a certain area. It didn't necessarily consider the utilities availability and the fiscal practicalities to allowing some of the areas to meet urban density. So as you're very familiar with, urban growth areas are intended to be much more dense in development and population. And so as it turns out, looking back, hindsight is often twenty-twenty, and we identify areas in specifically the Tumwater Urban Growth Areas, but urban growth areas statewide that simply are impractical or impossible to meet urban growth densities or urban densities, and therefore will never meet their threshold, carry their weight as a proportion of a given UGA area. So we hope you analyze UGAs as an opportunity to find the most risky or least probable areas to meet UGA densities, and you consider opportunities to shift those acres to other areas that for reasons of environmental concern or for opportunity to serve with utilities or proximity to growth patterns, provide much better opportunity for the county to meet the densities and accommodate the population that is here today and will be coming in the future. And lastly, I hope you consider the Sustainable Thurston Doctrine and the buildable concepts that were very well laid out with a long-term vision. I think Bar Holdings and the Sailor's Landing proposal meet the intent and answer a lot of unanswered calls that are clearly described in Sog and Sustainable Thurston. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. We've got two folks online here, and Tasha will promote you to a speaker, and it looks like that would be Betsy Norton first, followed by Loretta Seppen. I assume that's Betsy, B Norton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, declare.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick items. These actually, after hearing Rhonda Larson's presentation, would sort of give you a reason for an EIS, which is that I just wanted to bring to your attention, two thousand twenty-two, the Ninety-Third flooded across from the preserve and had some ESA impacts downstream. And then over on the eastern side of Ninety-Nine, there is a contamination site that is mapped on the Thurston County Show Me Everything maps, and I would encourage you to take a look at that. But the proximity of that contamination site, the high groundwater issues, the fact that it's flooded recently, and the proximity of the Deschutes River over there makes me encourage you to pursue an EIS to make sure that all the stormwater requirements that are met with the undoubtedly huge amount of impervious surface planned are going to be sufficient to protect both the environment and the ground and all the species there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Loretta Seppen. unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
There we are. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Loretta Seppen in southeast Olympia. I'm asking your indulgence tonight to speak about a topic, long-term agricultural designation, that you had a hearing on and already sent proposals over to the county commissioners on more than a year ago. The county commissioners are just about ready to have a hearing on this at the end of this month, and they have added something that you didn't have a chance to talk on. So that's why I want to bring it up again to you. But first, let me start by summarizing a difference. They had two things that they decided different than your proposal. They are going to recommend reducing the block size, that concept from, you had recommended that it should be forty acres, and they're going to go back to the three hundred and twenty acres. And block size means that, remember, is you add up a bunch of parcels that are near each other, and you have to get to that size. The commissioners also are proposed that they not include prime soils if irrigated, and you hadn't had chosen to do that. Their proposal's going to add up to no new, no new lands being added. Your proposal added some new LTA lands. That's a disappointment to me, but the thing I'm talking about tonight is that they're allowing for a voluntary opt-in proposal. That voluntary opt-in means that landowners could choose to have LTA designation for their land. I doubt that any landowner will meet the eligibility requirements as currently written, and so I'm suggesting when I write to them, I'm going to suggest to them that they make two changes, and I wanted to share those two changes to you, and that is to allow people to opt in if they have prime soils, if irrigated, if they can document that they actually have water rights that would allow for irrigation. Let them opt in, and the second one is let them opt in if they just have, make that forty-acre block rather than having to go all the way up to three hundred and twenty acres, because I don't think anybody's going to meet that. I'm assuming that most landowners aren't going to opt in, but these two changes would open the door if a landowner wants to see the farm stay in farmland to avoid that fight between the kids over either keeping the land as a farm or selling it to the highest bidder after the parent's death. And so I think there's some advantage in the opt-in. I ask you to consider asking the Board of County Commissioners to make those two changes before they have their hearing November twenty-fifth. Thank you.
And then just as a note, so when we've had issues that we've already had a hearing on, and we've made a decision and sent recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, there's not much more that we can do, so just as a heads up to make sure everybody's aware from a process standpoint. But again, Loretta, thanks for the comments. All right, anybody else? Oh, we've got David Troyer, oh, Toyer.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time this evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is David Troyer with Troyer Strategic Advisors. We're a land use and economic development consulting firm assisting Rob and Mike with their bar holdings proposal. I know you're getting an initial briefing tonight kind of on UGA land swaps and a little bit about the bar holdings proposal in anticipation of more to come in the future. And I think that's the important point to bring up here, is there is more to come in the future. I think first of all, the big thing I want to cover is that there are two types of land swaps that are now permitted under the Growth Management Act. There's one that is allowed to be considered on an annual basis during your regular docketing cycle, and there's ones that are to be considered as a part of the periodic updates, which are your ten-year updates to your comprehensive plans, which you happen to be going over right now. You're in the process of doing that to be adopted by the deadline in two thousand twenty-five. And that's the type of UGA swap we're looking to be considered as. And so I think it's very important that as you go forward and staff does briefings, and we'll be sending information over in advance of our, you know, meeting on our specific proposal, that you look at the criteria as it relates to the type of swap we are proposing in this instance. The other thing that's important is it was brought up tonight that, you know, this is wrong because an EIS hasn't been done, so on and so forth. We are at the very early stages of this moving forward. I know it feels like a long time, because getting through the kind of assigning stuff to a docket process and putting it as a priority and putting it in the schedule, it takes a bit of time just to get that out of the way. That being said, the CEPA process hasn't started yet. Our CEPA process hasn't finished yet, and I'm sure that, you know, county staff with their substantial expertise on working on many different projects, wide range of complexity, understands, you know, what's going to be needed in the process for making a CEPA decision relative to this project and how it relates to the two thousand twenty-five comprehensive plan update. So I think, again, my biggest thing that I want to touch on this evening during my brief few minutes is that there is a lot more to come yet, and I think that in some cases, some of the questions that folks are raising, some of the communications that you're receiving are very premature because that information hasn't been brought forward yet. And so I think a lot of folks are speculating on things, and I think we can have a way different conversation once the information is moved forward and its wholeness to you all for a deeper consideration. So appreciate your time this evening. Hopefully I've stayed within my time, and thank you very much.
Perfect timing.
Well done.
All right, if we've got no one else, we're going to move on. Oh, Mr. Penn, go ahead. Yeah.
Good evening. What a wonderful evening to spend with you guys. I'm not going to be making any comments regarding a current project that I have going. I believe you're going to wrap that up today here anyway, but I am going to make a comment regarding, and perhaps whether you want to apply it to UGA swaps or even future enlargement of UGA areas or such. One of the things that was not perceived back when they started, in fact, it was not even in the picture. And I think it was brought up about some of the environmental aspects, frogs, gophers, other variety of things. Now, some of you may be familiar. I have a farm of twenty-eight acres on the river. Which all sounds fine and good, and I'm zoning one unit per five acres. So how many houses are allowed on that property? One. Why? Twenty-eight acres, five units per, one per five acres. Because of the environmental impacts on the property, in order to properly In order to properly adjust for the amount of density. You are to be calculating it based upon the usable property, not just merely the size. In other words, if you are considering, and I'll just, it's a property inside of a UGA, but it's not usable. Because suddenly between the time that they brought this in and the time that they're considering and what they've come up with now. That's a whole nother issue. And I would use another example. I do a lot of different development issues for people and follow-up. One of the projects had was a forty acre piece. A man wanted to split it up into four pieces for him and his family. But you know what? Once we did the environmental check on it. There was only two acres that wasn't completely under, within a buffer zone, meaning that was one unit. In order to have the property density level, use level, you need to actually have considered the fact that there is environmental aspects. The idea of swapping property, just my opinion, no real connection of all. The idea of swapping for land that cannot be used because of environmental reasons for property that could be. And that particular project would be a lot closer to my home, so I don't have to run an extra. Five, six miles round trip to get, be able to utilize services would be a benefit. Yes, there's more people out there than there used to be. But I, I, I'm just trying to make sure that we, we remember that. The old guidelines were all written prior to even the idea that we had all these environmental impacts that we now have. And they're, they're multi-fold that more than what they were at the time they were created. So it is appropriate to switch at times.
All right. I think we have, no one else signed up for public comment and we're online. So with that, I think we will move on to new business and that would be item number three point five. Just the Martin Way rezone.
Meeting Commissioners Leah Davis with Community Planning. This is the second work session on the proposal called the Martin Way Land Use Amendment and Rezone. The primary purpose tonight is to address questions and issues that came up during the first work session on October second. For the record, this is item CPA twenty-three on the official docket. The parcel in question is seven eight zero nine Martin Way in the Lacey Urban Growth Area. So one of the first questions that came up last meeting on October second. Was, is there a development moratorium on the parcel? Staff was unable to get clarification from Development Services on the existence of a moratorium. However, when staff consulted with the prosecuting attorney's office. It was made clear that a legislative action can be taken on a property even if it does have a development moratorium. Because this rezone is part of the comprehensive plan update, any action to rezone would be considered a legislative action. As far as the voluntary compliance agreement goes, some commissioners were concerned that the county steered the applicant to apply for a rezone. But that was not recommended by Development Services as a remedy to the violations. It was the decision of the applicant to take that path to getting approval for the desired use of trailer sales. No development application can be accepted until all violations are cleared. Another question was about vesting. There were. Development applications have varying vesting periods. And since there's no development application submitted currently. There is no way of knowing what kind of vesting might be implemented in the future on that parcel. And then there was a question about the current zoning at the city of Lacey. They do have the mixed-use high-density corridor zoning, which is what the proposal is for this property. Their zoning code density is currently the same as the county's. And you might remember that there are many types of commercial and retail uses allowed in the mixed-use high-density corridor. And there are also all types of residential uses allowed, but there is no requirement for residential component for a development. I think that answers all of the questions that came up at the last work session. The staff is ready to answer more questions and perhaps when we get those questions answered, we could get a recommendation for the board tonight.
All right. Do we have any additional questions?
Very precise and to the point. Thank you.
Staff has provided us with an optional motion, so we've discussed this quite a bit. We have an optional motion to move to recommend the adoption of the comprehensive plan docket item CPA twenty-three Martin Way Land Use. And rezone amendment from low density to mixed-use high-density corridor. As one of our papers is just. All right, so we've got a motion moved and seconded discussion on the motion.
Mr. Peszinger. Stated my concerns about this. Particular proposal at the previous meetings, they all still stand. Share all those same concerns still. Feels like a spot zoning effort for an individual property that has no overwhelming community benefit. That can be described. Lots of people say, oh, it might result in low-income housing. Or just additional housing, but there's no promise or guarantee of any of that. And correct, if anything else nearby is to be indicated, it's pretty unlikely. I support the idea of creating more housing and if we were to come up with a motion to change that entire. Strip of land, all properties in the UGA there to this density, I would be in favor of it. But I'm not in favor of just simply changing one property. And would ask others to not vote in support of this type of action. It's, it's not appropriate for the planning commission to choose individual properties to change valuations and zoning designations.
I don't think we have the authority to change all the others without them coming forward with their responsive action. That'd be correct?
We would wanna consult with, get board direction.
Yeah, I mean.
Something like that. I mean, we, the board does have the authority as a legislative action. And what we would ask is a motion on the applicant-initiated proposal. And if there was a separate motion that the planning commission wanted to move forward. They could for the board's consideration as like a.
For the board's consideration, cuz this is an applicant's proposal for a specific piece of property.
Yes, and we didn't, we obviously only noticed the public hearing for the applicant-initiated proposal. So you would need to have a separate public hearing, separate public noticing if you were going to include any additional, any additional.
So it would be, it would be a proposal or a recommendation from the board. If this was approved to have the legislative act of the Board of County Commissioners. To look at rezoning that entire section.
Yes, and, and in terms of timing, Lacey is looking at. Housing updates just like we are. So if it, if it was something you wanted to relate to the board. We would probably craft it in such a way that it would be folded into Lacey Joint Plan Housing Updates. I do think Lacey is doing an open call for rezones and comprehensive plan map amendments. I'm not sure exactly when that's gonna happen, but timing-wise, it could be something that the board can consider in the next year or two.
So would that be something Commissioner Peszinger would be, I mean, that seems like that would be the logical step.
Oh, I support us doing a. Section-wide.
Commissioner Fishburne, go ahead of me. Okay, Mr. Fishburne. Welcome, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So I, I think in the last discussion we had on this topic. I had asked if there were other zoning codes that we could take advantage of that would. Make it more, I guess, required or requisite for that piece of property to be. Only used for multifamily buildings. Was, was anything like that uncovered?
It would be, I think the same thing would apply. So the residential zones in the Lacey UGA. Do have minimum densities associated with them. But it would be a decision that the planning commission would make on the applicant-initiated docketed item. And then a separate motion on whether you wanted a piece of. Or I guess it's, it's just the thought base, whether you, we would wanna see a different kind of zoning on that. Or the board to consider a different kind of zoning. And then that would, depending on what the board wants to, we'd have to notice that separately. The high-density residential zone doesn't, is the highest density one that Lacey has. And it doesn't have the same density range as the mixed, mixed-use high-density corridor.
What is the difference?
I was just gonna look that. I'm not sure if, if Leah knows it. Twelve to twenty is the high density, but the mixed-use high-density can be. Oh, no, the mixed-use high-density has to be twelve to twenty, any style of housing. Yeah, and, and then high-density city residential is six to twenty. Right.
Yeah, and, excuse me, Chair. I was just gonna say on what Leah noted in her thing is on current zoning for the city of Lacey is mixed-use high-density corridor. Zoning designations within the city of Lacey permits retail office use, services, transportation, while on residential uses with a density of twelve to twenty units per acre.
Yeah. But it's not a required component. So the only difference would be a, a high-density residential zone. The commercial components aren't allowed and then there's just a minimum floor. But you don't get the same kind of density bonus allowances in those zones as you would. In the mixed-high-density quarter. At least not now. I mean, I, I think Leah noted it in her, in her memo. That there are a lot of changes underway right now because of all the housing stuff. So you might see changes. Lacey might be proposing changes, things like mixed-high-density corridor.
I just wanted to make sure that I was hearing what we were talking about correctly. So it sounds like what, what we're proposing here is. Is to approve this with the addendum that we would. The, the, the approval would happen in concert with the, the chang- changing of, the, the changing of the zoning of that whole area.
Make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners that they take a look at the whole section like Commissioner Peszinger said. To rezone the whole section.
But is, but not conditionally, like we approve it.
Well, we don't have that often.
Right, right. But like that our approval is conditional on that, yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's, it wouldn't be a conditional, it would be a, and we would also like to see you. It's, it doesn't carry the same force as a conditional and I don't know that we really have the ability to tack a condition.
I mean, if our, if our purpose here is to be advisory anyways. Like if, if all we're doing is, is, is proving plans to then, then be passed on. We can say this is what our recommendation to you would be, that we, like, that our approval of this would only have been. Conditional on this other change. So if you approve this, approve it under this, this type of changes, right?
They're gonna do what they wanna do anyway.
Exactly.
So if we make it the recommendation, like Commissioner Peszinger is recommending, it's a recommendation. With the approval of this, with the recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners look at that entire section to be rezoned as mixed-high-density.
Think on the other hand, the, the recommendation could be to not approve this, but to look at rezoning the entire.
Yeah, that's what I recommend. Not, not approve it individually, but then lead a, lead to a process of being approved as part of a set.
And another option we have to convey is with findings, right? To send to the board, so we could, we could say something like, you know, like have some findings around. Like wanting to see a more comprehensive look at that area.
Yes, no matter what the decision is, you can provide findings so that the board has insight into why the planning commission made that decision.
Mr. Casino.
I, I think when we're considering on whether or not our recommendation should also include any other kind of rezones through that whole area. We have to also think about that, everything south of, of Martin Way there. Along that whole corridor, all the way down Kingham, all the way down to Marvin. This is the largest undeveloped piece of land there. Everything else is already developed. If the Lacey finally comes through with some missing middle stuff that's gonna come through and, and add some housing into this other areas that are already developed. That might happen. We don't actually ever see that happening, but that might happen. But all those kind of rezone things really are a very separate issue from this one, cuz this is the only undeveloped land. And as such, I think that we should do everything that we can to try to get the highest density possible there. To get the most homes, the, the possibility of the most homes there that we can without regard to anything else. Cuz who knows if Missing Middle is actually gonna do any infill on any of those neighborhoods that are through there.
Mr. Bartlett.
I completely agree, which is why I'm very hesitant to give, to approve any. Any rezone that does not have that as its only outcome.
It's only what?
Because what's, what I can, like, any, any reason that does not have, have that residential as its only outcome. I'm, I'm, I'm very hesitant to approve precisely because it's the last spot that it can happen. And if it, in some ways, it's better for me, to me, for us to hold on until that, that, that passes elsewhere. Then approve something that does not restrict to just housing there, because that's the only opportunity that we're gonna have.
I don't, I don't think that's really our position to try to impose force and economic outcome on there. I think that that's the, the market's position to do. What we're, what we're supposed to be doing is setting the table so that way the highest and best use can happen there. And the highest and best use would probably also make it so things happen more quickly. I don't wanna wait two, three, four, five years before we see this piece of property redevelop. Sitting there is just bare dirt that is, it's kind of an eyesore the way it sits. So the sooner this gets redeveloped, the better, the higher the density that it could get redeveloped at, the better. Everything about sooner and higher is good to me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Casino. All right, I have one comment just for staff because I, I looked this up. The county's website says that rezones are not allowed. So I went back and read the code and the code does not say that. So if you guys could send that up to Flagpole to let somebody at IT know that. When you go on the website and search this, it says that, you know, the, the moratorium, the list of things that aren't allowed. One of them is rezoning.
Yes, there are, yes, there is, there are two different kinds of rezones. There's quasi-judicial ones and there's legislative ones. And because our zoning map. Matches exactly our comprehensive plan map, every rezone that we do here in Thurston County is a legislative one. There are places, like if we had a future land use map, where there would be quasi-judicial rezones. So that's the nuance there, but yes, it is, it is. That, that's hard to follow in a place like Thurston County where we don't have quasi-judicial rezones. So we can, we can put that, we can, we can clarify by putting that in.
All right, so we do have a motion on table, but I just wanna note a couple of, I think, the areas of disagreement that I'm hearing. So I think we've got a suggestion on recommending a more comprehensive rezone for that area. We have a suggestion around the type of zone that we are, or some disagreement around the type of zone. In that one does not have a necessary outcome of housing and one does. That's the difference between the mixed-use high-density corridor and. That's the difference between the mixed use high density corridor and the high density residential. And then. What was the other one? I think those are, those are the, the essential elements of disagreement, I think, that we have. Is there a way that we might be able to amend this to get those together? Or have a package of recommendations that we might be able to all agree on? We don't need to. But I think we could have separate motions. I think we will be in separate motions territory no matter what. I think the, the real question I think would be. If there was a recommended amendment to the motion on the type of zone.
The type of zone for the entire area?
Just for the.
In this spot.
For this parcel.
Which I believe you're saying then reflects what we're looking at in the larger area.
That would have to be a separate motion, because it's not really what's before us, but we can recommend what we choose.
I'm just trying to lay out the structure of what, what we're thinking here process wise.
Yeah, I think we've got one motion for the zone on the specific request. And then I think anything additional that we want to recommend to the board, but. My feeling is that we probably won't be able to get everybody on exactly the same page, and that's okay.
I, I have thought about it. I cannot come up with an, an amendment that I think would work, so I'm simply gonna vote no against this recommendation.
All right, any further discussion on the motion on the table? And that is, I remind folks to recommend the adoption of the comprehensive plan docket item CPA twenty-three, Martin Way land use. And rezone amendment from low density to mixed use high density corridor. There is no more discussion. I will. Take the vote, call the vote, and we'll go ahead and call the roll. So we'll start with Commissioner Casino, and then we'll go to the online folks.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Do you want me to just call them?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, Commissioner Bartlett.
Nay.
Nay, Commissioner Boebarger.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye.
Commissioner Fishburne.
Nay.
Commissioner Halverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pesinger.
Nay.
Vice Chair Hanson.
Nay.
Chair Day.
Aye.
Six-four, six-four, that motion passes. To recommend the adoption. Docket item CPA twenty-three. I assume we will have a minority report.
I'd like to make another motion, Chair.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to make a recommendation to go along with this decision. That the Board of County Commissioners consider a rezone for the entire section.
All right, any discussion on that motion?
Rezone to what?
Rezone to mixed use high density corridor. Excuse me.
All right, any discussion on that motion?
Well, I don't want to be picky here, but when you say the whole section.
We should probably specify.
That's six hundred and forty acres of undefined land.
Yeah, so more specifically, the Martin Way corridor.
So everything in the Martin Way corridor, from the studies, would that be the boundaries of it?
Well, that's your mixed use high density area. That's where they're building the apartments and the. The small retail places and all that along there. Like you said, most of it's already developed, but that does not mean with the change, if the commissioners want, if they want to request a zoning to change that. There are a lot of older homes and areas in that areas that could be converted.
I'm, I'm not concerned about, I'm only concerned about the geographic area that we're making a recommendation on. And if the geographic area is just what is on the Martin Way corridor study, that, that's one thing, and if, if the motion means that we want it all to be. Mixed used high density, or if we just want it to be a higher residential density than it already is. Because I don't know if mixed use, or, you know, mixed use high density corridor zoning is appropriate. Even south of their corridor goes pretty deep north and south, and I don't know going that far is. I think if we just have the recommendation that we want them to consider. Higher residential densities throughout that region would be better, but not specify it to the specific zoning.
Yeah, I don't know.
I consider it friendly. I support that.
Did you want to amend the motion?
I second it as amended.
So amended as that, so the Martin Way corridor.
Considered for upzoning or anything from high density residential to mixed use high density. As appropriate.
Right.
The study, for the study area. Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, with that, let's take a vote. I'll should you call the roll.
Commissioner Bartlett.
Aye.
Commissioner Boebarger.
Aye.
Commissioner Casino.
Aye.
Commissioner Fishburne.
Aye.
Commissioner Halverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kaiser, aye. Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pesinger. Vice Chair Hanson.
Aye.
Chair Day.
Aye. All right, that motion passes as well. All right, are we gonna want a minority report? On the recommendation?
Do you want to send any findings?
Do we? What findings would we like to send?
Whereas we're low on housing. Four thousand change, or be resolved.
I don't know if it would be appropriate. I'm just saying, you know, the mixed use housing, I get it. I get the Lacey, Tom Water, Olympia. Housing crunch that we're going into with this whole thing. I don't know if it would be appropriate to make a finding that. Applications, if this zoning is rechanged, applications for high density housing apartments, et cetera, be a primary consideration. That would be. Something in the right direction, particularly in the UGA area.
I agree with Commissioner Alverson that there are many properties along that corridor that are underdeveloped or whatever. Some of them are old houses that could look like they want to be torn down. Some of them are old. Very old and probably grandfathered in under development codes of how apartments and. There's mobile home parks, but what you have a ton of is like. Concrete slabs that used to be parking lots for large businesses, and literally the business doesn't exist anymore. Maybe it's a shell of a building, maybe it's converted to a weed shop, maybe it's some other kind of. You know, business that's going out of business. There's some new businesses in there, tractor dealers and other stuff, but there's a lot of. Underdeveloped opportunity along the corridor that's filled with transportation and services, and. I think it would be good if we encouraged development, including anything we can do, any tool we can find. To encourage low income housing, combination, it belongs everywhere. It's not a question of does it belong in one spot or another spot. Low income should be part of our housing everywhere we build housing, and we should have mixed housing all over the place, so. That corridor has been developing. There's tons of new developments. There's a thousand plus unit apartment complex across the street from Costco. There's tons of stuff that's been built east of Marvin, and. You know, there's new stuff being built on Carpenter Road that's very expansive apartment complexes, but. There's a lot of dead land there on that UGA Martin Way corridor, so we have a lot of opportunity to improve.
So would you be in, in favor of a finding that, you know, that. Applications that come in, if this zoning is changed, if they're for low income housing or. Multiple housing units that they be fast tracked and.
Fast track, lower fees, increased bonuses.
Community bonuses.
Whatever we can do.
Impact fees.
What we're allowed to do, I'm in favor of.
I just want to make sure you all are aware that you'll be able to provide that input again. When the Lacey joint plan updates for housing come before the planning commission next year.
And from what I've been hearing from them, they're, they would be in favor of something like that.
They are. I just want you to know that this, this is just the beginning of that conversation. This isn't the only opportunity for the planning commission to weigh in. Because we're, we're basically just waiting for them to develop their proposals before they come to our planning.
I'm all about starting that conversation off on the right foot, so.
All right, so as staff, do we have, feel like we have a clear direction from the planning commission on findings? Or would we like to restate that a little bit more?
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
Okay.
Go back and listen to this a couple of minutes.
Thank you, Leah.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Have a good evening.
Okay. And. Name of the names. Okay. All right. With that, our item three point five. Is concluded, and we will move on to a discussion item for number four. For debrief of Bar Holdings Open House.
Good evening, everyone. Anna Rodriguez. You all have interacted with me many times before so far this year. I, you heard many things during public comments, and I really want to emphasize this is like the intro to the intro to the intro. There's a lot that, we had a very successful open house. And Ashley and the planning directors are working on countywide planning policy updates, this new state law that rulemaking is in the process of, so. Still very early, but because the open house was so successful, we felt this was a good opportunity to just kind of start that conversation, as I'm sure you all hopefully appreciate. So on the slide, it says Bar Holdings, UGA Swap Land Use Amendment and Rezone. There's more to this discussion than just that, but that is the formal docket title.
I agree. I think it's the case, and if it is, I think it bears repeating, so people hear it, that the, the. Choice has been made to hold these open houses and interact with the public really early on in the process. So that people really have a chance to weigh in, and that it's not an open house to tell you what we've decided.
Right, you beat me to it. I was going to say that on my following slide, so thank you for bringing that up. No, I appreciate you bringing it up too. I think the more we can emphasize it, the better. The docket process starts early. It went to the board in January, but it's not adopted till April, so there's many months of. Time figuring things out, figuring out how things work at the comp plan year, staff has a lot on their plate, so doing what we can to make things continue to move forward. And like you said, having open houses earlier rather than later, because as we've heard many times from the community, it's better to hear sooner. But a teaser, you'll hear later on, sometimes having things early early leads to confusion as well, because we're doing something new, which totally understandable. So like I said, kind of super incredibly high level, one slide brief overview of this proposal, a little bit on. State law regarding UGA swaps and updates from countywide planning policies, and then kind of just discussion and next steps. So this proposal, Mike and Robert here, along with Chris and David, so you've met the folks who are involved in this. It's an applicant initiated request. It was docketed CPA one. It's number four on the comp plan docket, simply because the previous three items had already worked on before, so this is the. Number one priority docket item that had not been worked on prior to this year, just for some context, and so. The request of this proposal is to amend and adjust Tom Waters' UGA, and so. The proposal at hand is to take advantage of the UGA swap legislation that has come down. And remove eighteen parcels north of Black Lake in order to add three parcels off of ninety-nine and ninety-third, and so. On the aerial map here on the left, those are the parcels that are proposed to be added to Tom Waters' UGA. And then on the right is the map of the parcels proposed to be removed. It would be a net decrease to Tom Waters' UGA as the proposal does remove more acreage than it does add. And following swapping and adjusting Tom Water UGA. And the proposal is to additionally rezone those three parcels from one to five. And into general commercial mixed use and light industry.
The ones on the left.
Yes, thank you, the ones on the left. So this is just, I mean, you all, you, you have lived here longer than I have. I'm sure you're familiar with where this is on ninety-nine south of the airport.
It's just north of Black Lake, right?
The parcels on the right are, yes. The ones on the left are south of the airport on ninety-nine.
Yeah.
The barn nursery is.
So the parcels that they want to take out of the UGA. And put back into rural Thurston County. Are boring on the lake or water body. So they would be more environmentally sensitive. Than the area that they're looking at putting into the UGA. Would that be a correct assumption? Not without having an E I S, I understand.
Yes, the, the ones being taken out have. Critical areas, power line easements, probably have lower development potential, if you think about development capacity.
Being taken out, that's the area near Black Lake, along that road there. But it's also probably some wetland closer to the lake. And has some developmental challenges because of environmental impacts, et cetera, right? Okay. And that would be the types of areas that we might want to look at more preserving than building houses and stuff on.
Yes, the buildable lands inventory that's been adopted would identify the area being taken out as not having a lot.
I'm just trying to get my head around the concept, okay?
But it's contiguous, right, with the city of Tom Water. Looking at your map here, that's what it appears, right? So it's actually a contiguous parcel. The city's right there. The UGA is right there.
Yes, whereas the, the other land, it's adjacent to the UGA, but not, not directly with the city. However, the services, the infrastructure and services are fairly close.
So going back to thinking about it, it seemed logical at some point with the UGA around the urban area.
Nay, for the record and you all, in putting this map on here, I neglected to include the legend with the dash lines and stuff, so I recognize that adds confusion, so. For all of you.
But it's adjacent to the Tom Water city limits, and that's what I'm looking at. And it has close proximity to utilities and sewer and water and stuff. Versus the other area that is in the sou- southern area of the Tom Water UGA that doesn't, and has some environmental impact potential problem. Okay.
Commissioner Bartlett.
My understanding is that part of the, part of the argument that's being made on both sides is precisely that. That this area. Effectively can't be developed that is currently within the UGA because of all the restrictions. And thus adding, so. It's a little bit. It's a little bit of, I guess, miscommunication or miss, miss, like mismatch to say that it's like. That you're protecting, you're protecting more habitat by swapping this out, because those areas are already under other. forms of development restriction. And this area has fewer of those protections. So it would lead to a net increase in in development overall, and then that decrease in green space.
Actually, I think it would be a net increase in green space with how many acres? Eighteen or forty six? No, sixty five versus forty six.
I'm sorry, point of order. Will we please the planning commissioners not argue with other or debate other planning commissioners? But direct if we have a different opinion, direct our comment to the chair.
I think our whole point is to debate each other. I think we can feel free to direct them to the chair.
I think that the point Commissioner Bartlett is making is that the development capacity piece. And so the development capacity of the land being pulled in would be higher than the land being pulled out.
Right. And that is, excuse me.
Great. Commissioner Hoverson, then Commissioner Hanson.
So that does violate one of the rules for UGA swaps.
The two, there's two different UGA swap legislations. Their proposal is wanting to reference the twenty twenty two UGA swap legislation, which although it it does reference buildable lands inventories, it says no net increase in acreage.
Right.
It doesn't specifically say development capacity. The twenty twenty four legislation, though, does reference development capacity. There are really no other cases out there for us to to look at. So in terms of like how you would interpret references to the buildable lands inventory even in the twenty twenty two legislation, I think that's where the rulemaking will help. We have sent inquiries to M R S C, Department of Commerce to try to really just get more information for the community as well as our.
Well, it's gonna be my next question, Ashley, is has this because it borders on legality with the UGA swap, has this been discussed with Travis or the P A O at all?
Yep.
Okay. And do we know?
We know there's a lot of gray area. Without, I mean, without rulemaking.
Yeah, I understand.
But so, you know, I think that the applicants have tried to put together an application to address the provisions of the new legislation. But the new legislation uses terminology that is not used anywhere else in the Growth Management Act. So that's just gray area. So they talk about, you know, patterns of development and and that's not something that, you know, we use when we do build the lands inventories and whatnot. So there's yeah, there's gray area and we get, we as a community may have one of the first first applicant initiated UGA swaps.
Commissioner Hanson.
I guess I have two questions. One may be a lot easier to answer than the other. What what utilities are available or how close are utility connections available to the parcels that are proposed to be brought into? But I mean, I know that's really close to the preserve, but I don't know what if there's a sewer line at ninety third or something. I just don't know where that is. And then my second question might be a lot harder to answer. At a really high level, what was the legislative intent? Was it to get more development into the UGAs by being able to swap out places that that don't have development capacity with places that do, parcels that do, and and therefore, you know, getting getting more density? Was that, I mean, is that the overarching like goal of this legislation? I said it might be hard to answer.
We could go back and listen to the discussion that the legislature had before they adopted the twenty twenty two legislation, but that is pretty much been at the core of the questions that we've been sending to the state is trying to understand what the intent is. I mean, I I think as we have engaged our other jurisdictions, there is a lot of excitement about having a new tool in the toolbox that allows for flexibility to address. I think it was, it might have been Robert Rice who who mentioned that, you know, the Calister geological sensitive area in Lacey and whether it will ever be serviced with sewer. I mean, Lacey is doing a full blown annexation study as a follow up to the joint plan, looking at like where where should development really be occurring? So I think those things are, you're laughing, Commissioner Peszinger. But I mean, there is excitement. There's general excitement about having a new tool in the toolbox. It provides a little bit more flexibility to rethink some of these UGAs that were established thirty seven years ago. What the state is thinking in terms of whether you're doing those swaps to increase development capacity, increase opportunities for housing, that is not necessarily like in the provisions. And then the amended twenty twenty four legislation specifically says no increase in development capacity. So I don't know why one would allow it and one wouldn't. But one is an annual amendment and one is a comprehensive plan and then, you know, larger comprehensive plan. So there's just a lot of unknowns. Happy to answer questions with, but the answers are probably going to be squishy for a while. What we do know is that the board did prioritize this project because they felt like a forum should be established and a process that should be established to at least consider it. So that's why we're bringing it forward and going out into the community, even though our answers might be squishy for a little bit.
Is it okay if I ask where where are the utility? The utilities now, are they on ninety third or are they on eighty eight?
The last work session on this, but there are some on ninety third and some on ninety nine.
Okay.
And that kitty corner to that is the property that the school district owns for future use. Okay, Commissioner Casino, then Commissioner Peszinger, then Commissioner Kaiser.
I I guess I my question is more around. I I know we're way early in this process. And I think it'd be good for us to think about what the decision points of this body are going to be. What is the planning commission actually going to be working on? And I I get the idea that the UGA swap process and the countywide planning policies probably aren't going to have a lot of input from the planning commission. That's really outside of what we do. But this particular UGA swap proposal probably is going to be something that we would have a decision point on. And then if we went forward with this UGA swap, we would then also have a decision on the kind of zoning that this new UGA property would have. Are there other decision points that this body should be looking forward to?
I think I think Anna has some slides for you.
Before we move on, we'll go Commissioner Peszinger, Commissioner Kaiser, and then.
My question is to follow on to Commissioner Hanson's about these two different UTAs, two years apart, it sounds like. And what do we know about them? It's weird to me. You just stated something about one having to do with comprehensive plan and one having to do something different. I'm curious what you can describe as the differences between the two. You know, I'm struck, it's only two years apart. It's odd. Why wasn't it just an update to the first one? Is it just a fully separate rule? So that's a question. And what is it in, is the latter one indicative of more that they found that they didn't provide enough intent and that the latter one then provided more intent by saying we don't want more, an increase in overall development?
The update to the R C W in twenty twenty two is in one section and in twenty twenty four, it's in a different section. So that enhances the confusion, but I will take no credit for developing this table. Allison at T R P C did this a while back in like when all of the countywide planning policies around this started a few months back, and I felt it would be useful tonight. She did a really great job clearly outlining where there are differences in the two sections.
Are there enough to share with folks that are here?
Do that.
You have a follow up before we move on to Commissioner Kaiser.
Yeah.
We can have more extras, too.
So.
We're all learning together.
And I don't know if you're willing to state that there's a summary by the staff that you feel like the difference was an update, the difference was totally new law. Do you have any perspective like that?
It's just two different Senate bills updating different sections.
And and there might be even more coming in the upcoming legislative session, just because the state's having fun with us. So the difference, though, is if it's part of a comprehensive plan update, a week planner, several plan update, we have chatted with our legal counsel, you know, what does that mean? Then essentially we can include a UGA swap as part of that consideration. That was like the twenty twenty two legislation. The twenty twenty four legislation, at least in in our read of it, is like your annual docket process. This one did come in and is, you know, being reviewed on the same timeline as our comprehensive plan update and joint plan updates for housing. So we think they could be considered under the twenty twenty two legislation.
Okay, I mean, it's odd to me that I've I've never heard a legal strategy of saying, I would like that law to apply, but not that law. It's been mentioned by public commentators that this land was previously zoned and undeveloped as it was owned, and therefore it was purchased for cheap, the number of four hundred thousand dollars was thrown out. If I could buy forty six acres for four hundred thousand, I definitely would, no matter where it was located or how developable it was. But do we know any of those facts? Do we know that it was bought for four hundred thousand?
Not the amount and the developed, it it wasn't as it was developable under rural zoning. I just want to clarify, it wasn't that it was undevelopable. It just would have been one house per five acre.
So I just would ask the entire planning commission, as we still could, about making decisions about, you know, purchases of land for under one zoning designation and then effectively up zoning them and increasing the valuation, you know, sounds like hundredfold in this case, but.
What what would the alternative be?
To up zoning?
To only upzone in between ownerships?
To develop density in our urban floor. That we, is our role all along?
Been here for a long time and I don't see the cities doing it. So and that's where our, I mean, that's where our development should be going. The cities don't want to do it and we can, we can do it in the UGA. That's our option. Because we can't do anything about what the city does. And we obviously can't put something like this in the role.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we have really good opportunity here for some good discussion, but it probably should be happening over many nights. And I propose that we allow Anna to finish her presentation. She's going to probably answer some of our questions. And then we remember we're at the beginning and the beginning, the beginning of a process. And then light up also many more topics we need to get through tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaiser. And with that.
Um. This language exists on the document that we'll have. And for the full, the commissioners online, I did share this with Tasha to email to you all. So if it has not come to you all, it should soon. I apologize for that inconvenience with the in person versus virtual component. Okay, great. Thank you, Tasha, for the record. So yes, on this slide, I have text from from the R C W with the additional language. And this is just the Senate bill for twenty twenty two. As we've been discussing, there is additional twenty twenty four legislation that has come down. But I felt it most imperative to include the twenty twenty two because it ties into the rest of our conversation and the fact that the rulemaking takes a very long time. I used to do rulemaking for the states. I'm a little bit familiar with the process. The rulemaking that is currently underway only addresses the changes in the twenty twenty two state law. So while the twenty twenty four updates are still relevant and the ledge did pass them, we won't have rule for those potentially for a little bit longer. They might integrate some changes. Don't hold me to that. The commerce will add the changes they feel necessary in this cycle, but I think it's safe to say for the most part, the rulemaking will address the twenty twenty two legislation. Okay, process and partners. This ties in a little bit to what I believe you were mentioning, Commissioner Casino. Parallel processes. I don't know, Ashley, if you want to jump in at any time of the updates. Okay. We've many, many discussions, many things have been heard, and you were even diving into it just now. Is that the countywide planning policies and this project kind of go in parallel? Because we don't have a process and we need to kind of buy planning policies update and those are ongoing. I developed this to try and highlight what county and you all, your role in this, but just how much external participation there is as well. And so given that this is an amendment, this proposal is for an amendment to Tom Waters' UGA. We want to ensure consistent partnership with that city. And so we want to go through their planning commission as well, their city council. This also because it is a UGA swap, it would have to go through the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee for their review and recommendation, and then all of that would go to the board. And that's just for this proposal. The countywide planning policies updates are happening alongside me moving through this process on this rezone. As was stated, new state law means we have to update our policies. The U G M Subcommittee recommended adding language for UGA swaps just a couple of months back. And so since that time, it's been in the juris, the planning directors of the different jurisdictions to hash out how that, how they want it to look. Because when you're in power, when you're the fund directors, you get to have those really fun visionary conversations and policy discussions. And so those countywide planning policies as a standalone will go to the board as well.
And I ju- just for those listening and for those here tonight, we just actually got a time and date for the first work session with the board to talk about the policy updates. And that is November thirteenth at nine o'clock.
That's not this particular policy update.
It's it's a work session to follow up on the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee recommendation. So there on on the second, yeah, many of that slide, we actually do have an Urban Growth Management Subcommittee recommendation. The board directed me to work with the other regional planning directors on refinements to that. And so we'll be sharing what the, sharing what the planning director's feedback is on the thirteenth, next Wednesday.
Is that something that WASAC is getting involved with as far as legislative action this next year?
Not that I know of. I've also sent in inquiries and have not heard anything. And the board of, the board will be holding a public hearing before any decisions are made. And so next week might just be the first work session. There might be multiples, but no matter what, there will be a public hearing that gets noticed. Start where we are. And we have in committee, Anna's done a really great job of collaborating with Tom Water up until this point.
Speaking of Tom Water, I do just want to say thank you to the city of Tom Water staff in the process of me planning this open house. We struggle to find venues with enough space and enough parking and that isn't too far out and too distanced from this proposal site in the city of Tom Water. We wanted as many folks as possible to be able to come. And so they recommended working with the school district and the folks in the grounds staff with Tom Water School District were really great to work with. And I would highly recommend to you all, if you ever need a venue, they're, they are great. And it clearly, as the photo shows, was able to accommodate a large group. So approximately a hundred seventy people, I think it's safe to round up to two hundred folks attended this open house. I was not there, so I need to extend gratitude again to my fellow staff for taking over the project. I was ill and contagious and had my first fever since Y two K. And so I obviously did not attend, but it was a great event. Many people came. We learned a lot. We've had some great deliberative conversations within G M S about how we want to approach open houses moving forward and things to consider. As I teased in the beginning, one thing that we learned was there's confusion just across the board. Why are they just now hearing about this? Why has a decision been made? Why? What even is a rezone? What does community planning do? What is UGA swaps? All of the above. And I think one thing, one benefit of folks confusion around our process and the comprehensive plan. And I think one thing, one benefit of folks confusion around our process and the comprehensive plan amendment process. Uh, highlighted that there is a confusion and that that's something that we need to address moving forward and to reiterate. We're trying to hold open houses earlier in the process so that we can get, gather as much feedback. To then bring to you all, um, to make things run more smoothly for you and it will, it feels, I mean, it was October. Um, so I understand the community's concern and their feedback that it felt like decisions had been made and so I think that was a really great. Concern that folks raised and I'm glad that they did, um, and I hope that those who attended left with. The answers that they needed from the staff who worked the event, they felt as though that was the case. On the board, it was across the board, I would argue that there, there was a pretty even split, there are folks. Vehemently opposed to this, there are folks who are vehemently for it, that's not even the right way to use vehemently, but you understand. Um, and all within the spectrum, um, and so I think it was a really. It it highlighted the hard work that we've been doing and that the, that my coworkers were able to execute this event. And folks came in with whatever emotion they had, they got their questions answered and then we were able to glean a lot of um process improvements moving forward. Commissioner Casino, you were there, do you have any thoughts?
I just thought it was a great open house, but the counties' last few open houses on the last few projects we've done have been really great, so I was glad to see it. But this one was really well attended. Really, really well attended and.
I think we can actually thank some of the folks in the audience for helping turn out, which really, I mean, we. There's only so much we can do, so I mean, we really do appreciate when other folks share the information.
Buy more cookies next time.
Buy more cookies next time.
Fifty dollar budget is insufficient.
But to your point, Commissioner Bartlett, the very beginning before we opened the meeting. Um, I think what uh struck me was how um civil and constructive the conversation was. Given all of the feelings that were in that room. So I hope that all our future open houses go like that. Okay, I did have another slide, I forgot. Um, and so. Up to date, um, we've received five hundred seventy-four comments on this proposal. The comments, all comments received, um, including those that were submitted on paper at the open house. Are online, so on our project webpage, there's a Survey Monkey link, there's another link that shows the fifty most recent comments. And then there's an interactive viewer that shows all, you can go through all five hundred seventy-four comments. And as part of that interactive viewer, Survey Monkey makes this really nice chart that kind of visually shows that. There is um a pretty, pretty decently even split on community sentiment in this. Um, and some themes that we gleaned from the open house are, like I said, confusion around U G A swap. Um, confusion around comprehensive plan amendment process, um, and then people also raised issues around potential traffic. Um, concerns and water quality issues as well.
Uh, yeah, um, I haven't uh actually used Survey Monkey weirdly enough, but um I was just wondering about like how you check to make sure that someone isn't. Filling out multiple uh, like filling out the survey multiple times.
So they, I believe that it's required they put their name, Tasha, on the survey? Okay, yes, so at the very least that, um, however. You can make up your own name, we've all made up emails to get free subscriptions to things, so while, while that is. I would never, I'm not wearing my Sony badge on, at a time. But all that to say, I, I don't think that there's an ill will in the county for folks to do that. Um, we did see during the docket process nearly seven hundred comments on this proposal and so I think, you know, given that number. Back in January and this number now, I think it's pretty on par, um, that folks are just being incredibly engaged and want to make sure that their feedback is heard. Tasha does, again, I'm wish, I'm shouting out a lot of staff here today because I really like working here. Tasha took every single paper comment that was submitted and inputted it for us so that they're all there. Um, and she also goes through.
I think we, yeah, there were a lot, and they're not.
And, and also uh compiles them into like thick things for me to keep at my desk.
I just want to clarify, the five hundred seventy-four comments, this is just from the open house? Or is this a combination?
This is across since the.
Wasn't this been mentioned like a year ago that this was by far and away the number one most commented thing in the last year?
In the dock, in the dock, the dock.
And that's part of these five seventy-four or no?
Those have them available on the website, uh, I think the, or the old, old comments, this is from it being officially docketed.
So the way I understand this is you are kind of processing these in parallel, the, the countywide planning policies and this specific thing. How are, what happens if you, if we get to the point? That we do have decision to make before countywide planning policies are made or how are we going to throttle that? Can, can we even move forward with this without a county, countywide planning policy in place yet?
There is, I would say we're, we're gonna try to get as far as we can. Um, and that's the parallel processing and so what we do know um is that there are state provisions. And in the legislation, um, and that we're going to be held to those no matter what. So we can start looking at those and start addressing the concerns raised by the community and bringing those forward. We're working with the Public Works Department, we're working with our Water Resources Division to try to get answers to the questions that come up here and come up with the community. And so having a forum to look at all that, review all the stuff that the applicants have submitted. Um, and then fingers crossed by the time we get to a place where the planning commission wants to make a recommendation. The, the board will have um final action on the countywide planning policies.
Are you, do you have a expected time when the board would adopt countywide planning policies this next round?
Um, depending on how things go next week and the feedback we get, it could be as soon as next January, February.
Okay, so this could be going along rather quickly then.
Any other questions on? And I will just, for the record, we have a website, we have an email with surf. And if you would like to comment on the project, we have the Survey Monkey as well. But you can also email me if you would like to, um, with questions, I'm always happy to answer them or direct folks where they need to go.
All right, moving along to continued business. We have item number five is work session number twenty-five on Thursday, twenty forty-five. Is minor countywide zoning corrections intro to implementation.
I need to start this off with an apology, I am not Maya. Um, in terms of going through this next piece. But she's off and so we're going to do the best we can, she provided a lot of great materials and so. I'll share, if you'd mind bringing up that presentation. Or, or and. Sound like Andy, sorry. You don't want me doing it, it'll take a long time. Hold please, yes. Um, so just a recap of what was discussed. At the last meeting, we started going through the development regulation components.
I can't fully hear you, there's people talking.
So folks here in the boardroom, if we could, sorry, we're having trouble hearing.
So we started reviewing development regulations, um, I think there were a lot of questions that came up specifically about those. Development regulations related to housing in the Grand Mound area. So we'll start off tonight's presentation with a response to those questions. And work is still underway, um, as it relates to that. And then we'll dive into the two other items, uh, mapping corrections, which will hopefully be fairly straightforward. Um, as well as we tried to give you um a little preview of what the implementation plan. Going to look like and so hoping to feedback on that. Yay, so I just did that, we move on to the next one. We're gonna go down a little, um, a little walk down memory lane for the Grand Mound U G A. Um, I think there were some good questions raised and here's just a recap on how the Grand Mound U G A came to be. Um, so the Rochester Sub area plan was created in nineteen seventy-eight, it did include Grand Mound, um, and it was identified as a growth center. And the desired density was four units per acre, that probably explains a lot in terms of the development patterns out there. Um, in the nineteen eighties, a community group contacted the county and they wanted to form a water sewer system to support even denser development. Um, subsequently, the county created the Grand Mound Sewerage and Water Plan and began to formalize a service area for those. Um, in ninety-six, the Grand Mound Sub area plan was adopted with the Rochester Sub area plan repeal, being repealed and replaced. And now we actually have two different sub area plans. And U G A for the Grand Mound area was created. So there's a map of the Grand Mound U G A. Um, and if you go to the next slide, um, the southern portion of the U G A is more difficult to serve. Um, there's little existing infrastructure that extends all the way down to that southern area. Um, and the zoning densities make it difficult to incentivize development and develop or funded infrastructure.
Isn't most of that land tribal at this point now anyways?
I'm not sure the exact breakdown in the south, I know on the east side, yes, um, but they're purchasing land in. All of Grand Mound, U G A. Terms of the housing code changes that were discussed um last week, there was a question raised about whether we could just allow. Basically like an unlimited number of A D U's on a particular lot. Um, we did look into it with the consultants, it got very confusing very quickly. Um, what we'd recommend is if you, if you as a planning commission wanted to see an allowance for more A D U's. Get there through changing density. On the underlying zone rather than. A zone with a density provision, but then allowing uses that increase density. Um, the only other example our consultant could find, I think, was down somewhere in the San Francisco Bay area and we're like, we're definitely not. So that's the Grand Mound recap, not a lot there, I think we're just looking for a thumbs up on moving forward, which is a standard. To, two units, two A D U's per lot. Okay, I got one, um, I got some nods, okay. And we're going to continue on that road, we are doing um just uh of note as well, when we come back with the housing stuff. Um, in a few meetings, um, we will be bringing the results of the land capacity analysis. Essentially the housing density analysis um for Grand Mound. Uh, the last meeting, it was just kind of a preview of what some of those findings are, but that's all being refined, so more to come. And then zoning corrections, this is where I really wish I was Maya because she has been working very closely with our G I S analysts, so I'll do my best to answer the questions that you have. But I will probably have to come back um at a following meeting. So as we launched this project, um, Maya worked with our geodata staff to just identify areas where our zone. The zoning designations don't align with parcel boundaries or U G A boundaries. And this is an opportunity through a comprehensive plan update to just sort of, it's. It's cleaning, cleaning things up rather than actually changing the underlying zoning or what's being allowed. Um, a lot of work has been done on it, hence this table with fractions of numbers of acres being added or taken away. Um, but it's our attempt to have a more accurate representation of where those zoning boundaries are.
Is that similar to what happened, we did last year with uh making adjustments to boundaries? For uh, I think it was Tom Water.
It might have been Tom Water and Lacey, I think they also had sliver corrections, I mean, if you're seeing these on a map, they're just little slivers.
That what we're talking about, that kind of adjustment?
Yep, the biggest one on there, next slide please, is this Nisqually Bluff area. Where the, yeah, the, the neighborhood boundary does not match the U G A boundary. But obviously those lots are developed, they're probably, they should be in the U G A. So we don't think we're going to get any questions from the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee. Um, Maya already provided some draft responses to all the countywide planning policy. Policies that exist for U G A expansion, it's really just, you know. And that is, that represents the, the largest acreage in those.
The idea is to push the U G A all the way down to Salmon Creek? Well, it shouldn't be salmon.
No, I think it's just the edge of. I'd be happy to follow up, I don't want to make a representation.
And the upper lots are going to be in the U G A?
Right now, you've got portions of lots, one side of the street lots, I think it's just trying to grab the whole. Grab the whole neighborhood and have it in the U G A.
Know what the blue line is around there?
Oh, yes, right, so, so the blue, the, the area outlined in blue is the area that would be brought into the U G A. Um, consistent with the rest of the neighborhood and Maya couldn't find any documentation. That would provide insight into why this was done, like whether it was intentional or not. None of that existed, so we're approaching it as just a, a cleaning things up.
This, this wasn't done prior to zoning of one to five or anything like that then? How did they put that many parcels in there?
Oh, no, I think it really was just a mapping error. Like, I mean, a lot of these are like geodata mapping errors. But making sure it's a public process, especially when you do, I mean, these are whole lots in this case, other ones are just little sections and slivers.
I don't know if it would matter any, but like this new line is going to bin weave in and out of the Nisqually Sub area plan. That doesn't affect anything or throw anything off, it seems weird if the Nisqually Sub area plan has some U G A and some not U G A.
That's a really good question, I, we will, we will definitely confer with that.
Maybe my eyes are wrong.
I, no, but I think, I think that's a good point. Um, because we are, we were initially planning on having the Nisqually Sub area plan. Be completed in parallel with complant update, what we're hearing from the stakeholders in Nisqually is that. They may want to slow it down to make sure we're in line with the Nisqually Wildlife Refuge Strategic Plan, which is had a slower.
Better idea anyways.
A slower start, so we want to be responsive to the community stakeholders. But it might mean that if there is any kind of um inconsistencies that we have to make some small adjustments in the meantime. And then implementation plan, so we don't have these slides outlining it, but did everyone get a chance to take a look at it? And do you have any questions or comments? And you can think about it and, you know, email them to, to Tasha. But before we start diving in on the substance, I think what Maya was looking for is. Does this format work? Is there enough level of detail here? Can you follow along? Are we missing pieces?
I'll be honest, I didn't have enough time.
It's okay. In true Maya fashion, we asked for just one page as an example and she produced three chapters worth of. Potential implementation items and so there is quite a bit of substance there, but I think at this point. In the process, we're really looking for. Is this what, is this what the planning commission and the community is, you know, expecting to see in this kind of document? So no pressure, we can come back to it, we'll have plenty of time. And then this last item, speaking of plenty of time. Huge thanks to you because of how efficient you all have been in getting through the complant, I know it probably doesn't feel like that because you spent like. Twenty-some sessions on it, we are way ahead of all of the other jurisdictions. And we're going to take a breath, we've been getting feedback from the community, from consultants. Um, and from you that taking a breath and spending more time with the public, well. Taking more time to develop the public review draft and then giving the community and you all more time to process it is probably a good thing. So we do have an amended schedule. We have heard from, after creating this presentation, we have heard from our consultants that we might not be ready on November twentieth with the climate chapter. Um, pieces that are missing, but we are on track for December fourth housing, so we might make some changes that November twentieth. But otherwise, um, still looking to have a public hearing draft done by December twentieth. And I was chatting with Miriam just today and she wanted me to give you a heads up that what you have been seeing. Is kind of a u- updated version of the complant that we've been working with. The hope is to try to take a lot of the narratives and put them in plain talk. And that means that we'll hopefully have a better product, but it will look different. So not losing any of the substance that you've already seen, but do expect to see maybe even longer sections as we put it into plain talk or shorter sections. Um, but Miriam just wanted me to give you all a heads up, it is a big lift, but we'll hopefully have a better product that the community has an easier time working with in the future.
I've made this request before when we, Andrew, when we did the Shoreline Master Program, but if at all possible, I would like a hard copy of the draft. Take with me. It's easier for me than sitting through four hundred pages on a computer.
Well, did you see the date there? These are like holiday, whatever that holiday is that you're celebrating, this will be our gift to you. Yeah, I know. I think I want a hard copy. I think, yes, we can get you a, a hard copy, at least in the, not a marked up version. I think it's just a clean, clean version, especially if we're moving to plain talk. Reading a marked up version is not the way to go.
Would that be like on the twentieth of December, we would get that?
Yes, unless you, I wish to do special deliveries later. Oh, is it December eighteenth? Oh, sorry. Okay, December eighteenth, it sounds like, maybe even sooner.
Is there anybody who wouldn't want a hard copy?
It is pretty big.
Yes. I remember what he did for me with that shoreline master plan.
And so the public hearing, still looking at February, March. And going from there. Oh, I got through that fast.
Any questions from us? All right, well, that finishes most of our new and continued business. And puts us ahead of time. Not missing something. Doesn't feel right. Okay, with that, um, I think we can move on to other business, which is the general twenty forty-five update.
I, I think it was on the, the slide, um, but just so you are, are aware, we are trying to plan an open house down in the Rochester Grand Mound area given the changes that may be taking place um to things like housing, that's whatnot, so we'll be sure to keep it moving online. And an environmental review is also underway, and we are on track. The draft um being ready for review alongside the public hearing. The, yeah, it's for the whole comp plan.
Who's doing the review?
Uh, Burke, Burke Consulting, consulting with a number of sub consultants. And that's actually one of their specialties. Um, you haven't seen, I, I think Lisa Gruder, Gruder at any of the meetings, but she has done a lot of environmental work. Um, we've learned a lot just working with her on what it should include.
Anything else? We move on to staff updates. All right, next up is Snap.
We have um an associate planner position open right now with a focus on water resources. And since I know some of you have connections in the water field, um, it would be awesome. Oh, Lake Management, I'm looking at the Lake Oaks too. Um, the uh, this person, um, it'd be a real resume building uh position. It is taking on a number of exciting projects for stream flow restoration. Working with Brian Benjamin, who just got the promotion to Natural Resources Program Manager. It closes in a week, and so if you have any good candidates, please, our way. Otherwise, yeah, we still have, we still have some holes in community planning.
Are any of those holes going to get uh dropped because of the county's budget shortfall and positions being eliminated?
Um, we are looking ahead and trying to plan strategically. We lost one of our halftime current planners recently, and we will not be refilling it. And I would say any, um, with this role that we're looking to fill right now, um, it's, it's critical. We've, we have uh with Brian, um, with Brian in that role over the last year and a half, he got about three million dollars in grants that we need to, we need to actually administer. So that, that's what makes the position exciting. It's also what makes it essential. But we'll be thinking about that with every position, make, if, if we have people leave, um, making sure that those positions, you know, that we can hold on to them in the long term.
So there's been no decision from them as to what positions are gonna be cut yet?
Oh, no, no. I, what I appreciate about all those conversations is that they're giving us a really long runway. So we've got a good year to plan for that rather than a few months, because I know the city of Olympia is going through something similar and they, they didn't have a, a year plus, so we, we feel grateful.
Tumwater, they haven't even reached a budget to look at yet, so.
Yay! We got a budget.
Uh, I have a couple of updates as well. So in spirit of recruiting, um, so we do have an opening or several openings on our Water Resources Advisory Board. That's the new advisory board that's replacing the outgoing Storm and Surface Water Advisory Board. The Board of County Commissioners chose to sunset the Storm and Surface Water Advisory Board in favor of creating the Water Resources Advisory, Advisory Board, or RAB, to take a more holistic look at a variety of water issues. So principal among them is the Shoreline Master Program implementation. Once we get that online, they'll be looking at the no net loss monitoring and taking on research projects for the board and things like that. In addition to um continuing to work on storm water issues, stream flow restoration, water quantity, anything that touches water. It's a, it's a new board that's gonna look at those things. So recruitment is currently open. So if you know anyone who is a shoreline resident, landowner, um, business owner, or has a background in, you know, water-related things, hydrogeology, ecology, et cetera, um, the board is currently accepting applications.
Who's that board gonna be under, Andrew?
Uh, who will it be under? It'll be staffed by, um, it'll be under community planning.
It will be.
It will be.
So Larry's not gonna run it?
Uh, he'll be a featured participant, absolutely.
It's, as we expand it, um, it's gonna be a mix of Larry, Andy.
It was going to be Brian.
Brian.
Now it's gonna be.
Brian will still be engaged because he's gonna be leading the water, the water conservation work. Um, so I think it's gonna be more driven by topic, kinda like we do with the planning commission, where you have different people coming and delivering um topic-specific updates.
Are you trying to pick up any of the old swab people?
Absolutely, yeah. We've been working with them um to bring them along if they would like to reply and be appointed to that board.
So the application process is the same?
Through the Board of County Commissioners Office, absolutely.
Is each commissioner given so many positions, or it's how, how they work?
I believe so. I think, well, I'd have to go back and look. I think we wanted to structure it so that we had more flexibility, because it's, you know, you're looking for very specific people and you may not find two people in each single district uh that are gonna meet those needs. So I think we did write it more flexibly.
Yeah, more, more like the historic commission, I think, where, yeah, you're looking for that specialization and you basically just have a sponsor when you get, get around to winning.
So I'll probably have the same update next time. Um, we have a lot of seats to fill. But moving on, um, the last thing I have, um, we did take a stab at modifying the planning commission agenda and the chair script to address the um changes that the planning commission wanted to make to public comments. So I do have some mockups of that I could share. Uh, planning commission can decide if they wanna take that up this evening or not, but uh we have floated some language that we think captures uh the conversation that was had at that meeting in October. Um, I hope so. It was a little tricky to follow all of it, but this is, this is at least a marker and a place to start and may not get you some of the way there, but uh we wanted to honor the, the planning commission to amend the public comments uh section and allow for additional comments after public changes are dealt. So there you have a first draft of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything, any questions from us before we move on to calendar with agenda items that are tentative and attendance?
Do we need to adopt this, or do we need to deliberate?
Make a motion. Don't move. Seconded.
Yeah, let's go for it.
Moved, seconded, um, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes.
You need to amend later?
All right. That means we trust you. Um, Commissioner Bartlett, you had something, or?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I had been, I had been going to ask if this was also given to you during.
Yes, I believe we did share it with, with them as well.
Yeah, it was emailed out. I got the chance to see it.
All right. With that, we will move on to calendar with agenda items and attendance. We've got three meetings on the schedule. Is that December eighteenth, correct? Because we were talking about the full public hearing draft on the twentieth.
The eighteenth is the Wednesday.
Okay. All right, so starting with the, we're just gonna run through and see if we've got any uh folks that will know they'll be missing the meeting, starting with November twentieth?
I'll have to zoom in if I can make it.
That one sounds like it'll probably go. Um, how about December fourth?
Today, I'll be out on December the fourth.
When I also be there, sure.
Oh, December the fourth is gonna be such a fun one.
I'm sorry.
We have, I recruited staff from Public Health and Social Services to come talk about their RHC and housing work. The thing you've been wanting. From the comfort of your own home.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll be able to make it. I can watch it. I'll actually be in the air, so.
I will be, I will have landed in our.
All right, and we won't be ma- we won't have anything on the docket for any recommendations or decision points for that.
I don't think so. We're, we're not planning on it. We were, we were trying to honor the agreement that we made to you all last year where December would be a month to reflect and learn.
All right.
But no promises or might be like.
Yeah, and we're working on getting staff from uh DFW and uh Northwest, Conservation Northwest to come on the eighteenth, December eighteenth. Spirit of learning.
Thank you to Commissioner Bartlett for making some of those connections for us.
All right, and then our December eighteenth meeting. All right, it sounds like we've got three meetings. Um, anything on those agenda items? Okay, well, with that, we will move on to good of the order. Does anybody have anything for good of the order? Mr. Pizzito?
This is probably not a huge deal, but it's been kinda gnawing at me for a while, and I probably should have said something sooner, but in our meeting minutes, we have an attendance record, and the numbers don't add up. Um, it says that we've had eighteen meetings, but some of us had sixteen, some of us had seventeen, some eighteen, and even one nineteen. And so I don't know what's going on. I don't know if it matters, but it's just one of those uh things where I'm not an accountant, but it's still kinda bothering me.
It was pretty accurate a long time. I think a recent miscant on something. Uh, how about good of your?
Mr. Passenger.
Yeah, I, I don't know, timing is perfect, but probably this is, I, I think we do it later rather than sooner, but coming at the end of the year, we have a change. We have commissioners and these firms, we have new commissioners. There'd be a new election of a, of a um commissioner lead back, leadership chair and vice chair and all whatnot. And in the past, uh, some people participated in a process where you know, people researched potential candidates, asked if people wanted to run, encouraged things to prepare in a preparation method. Should we do any of that prior to the new year? Question for fellow commissioners.
Would we like to do that as a body or as a?
I don't know, we've tried subcommittees before. It really didn't work out too well. We just did it at a meeting. Who wants to be on there? Who wants to nominate somebody to be on there and then vote for them?
Okay, do we have a meeting we would like to see that on?
We just talked about it, the good of the order, the next meeting or something?
Sure.
Anyway.
All right.
And you, a lot of times, I think those were the first meeting after the first, beginning of the year.
All right.
That's when new people would be seated.
Sounds good.
Just quick thing that um went to the grandma read Rochester Chamber of Commerce meeting today and saw a presentation by staff about the uh, our principal plan update. So that was, that was great to see. I think it was um well-received, but also it was um clear that as much as you can get out there and explain this to people, it will be helpful.
We have one tiny good of the order.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bumper.
Oh, I just wanted to wish Commissioner Bartlett a belated birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
How old are you?
I guess.
Right here.
All right, any additional good of the order? Hey, having no other business, this meeting is adjourned.